Good morning, everybody. Good morning. Thank you all for coming to today's meeting. It is Tuesday, April 16th. It is 9:01. Teaming with Chief Resendewal, please call.
Commissioner Farrow.
Present.
Chairman Gago.
Here.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Present.
Commissioner Blinkenhardt.
Present.
Commissioner Harper.
Present.
Thank you. Next item is Inspiration and Devotion. This is prepared from our tribe of House Rabbi Minsky. They say that this is my name. Before you guys all start this, please make sure your phones are off from the library. My apologies for not saying that earlier. Try to practice out of respect for both our new presentations and devotion.
Before, again, I'd like to thank Commissioner Donald for inviting me here this morning. We find ourselves in interesting and challenging times. Times of turmoil and confusion in the world over. This is a time that we all need to reach out to each other, and specifically our youth. Education is the key to securing a better future. In fact, on this very day each year, Education Day is proclaimed in Washington and many other states in honor of the birthday of Rabbi Shreppi, who was someone who furthered the causes of education in a very important way. We must bring them a message of hope and teach them about the Creator of all beings, who cares about them and has instructed them how to live properly and serve Him, Almighty God. Please join me in prayer. Our God and God of our fathers, great, mighty, revered God, we beseech you in your abundant mercy, keep Taos County and our wonderful country of the United States safe and secure, strengthen and encourage its leaders to remain strong and yielding in their efforts to educate and ensure security and peace in our land. Bless all the wonderful people gathered here to make the right decisions in enhancing our county and all of its inhabitants. Bestow upon them your blessing and grant them the wisdom and strength to serve you in the way you desire by fulfilling the seven laws that were commanded through Moses to all of mankind, which are the fabric of every healthy society, which they are: not to deny God, not to blaspheme God, not to murder, not to engage in adulterous acts, not to steal, not to torture animals, to set up courts to ensure justice and obedience to the other six laws. And bring upon us the ultimate state of world peace where nation shall not live sword up against nation. May we all be blessed with friendship, unity, and love. Bless us with light, prosperity, health, happiness, and redemption. Usher in the arrow, and the world, the whole world, will serve you in the way you desire as it is written. For then I will turn to the peoples in pure language, that they may all call upon the name of the Lord to serve Him with one consent. Amen.
Go ahead and go on to the French opinions. I see Nathan Sanchez here. Here's some others.
To the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Especially the agenda of the group of the agenda. I should get the agenda before you. One from your group. What's that? Mr. June. Mr. Sam, yes. Sam, welcome.
Commissioner O'Meara.
Yes.
Commissioner Blinkenhardt.
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow.
Yes.
Chairman Donald.
Yes.
Chairman Gago.
Yes. Next item is item 4, uh, 6. This is our special edition. We should be ready to follow it. Okay, three items, A, B, C. There is two items for the month of March 2019.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Commissioners. I'd like to present our new hire for the month of March. This is Georgia Sanchez. She started at the clerk's office approximately three, four weeks ago, and she's a deputy clerk, one. Please join me in welcoming Georgia to Taos County.
At the beginning of the presentation of the Year's Service Certificate, Nathan Sanchez, Chief Director.
Mr. Mahill joining me in presenting this certificate of service to Mr. Sanchez. As many of you know, Mr. Sanchez has left the county and in which he best of luck, we wanted to thank him for his service to Taos County.
Thank you, Commissioners. Mr. Hamid, staff, and members of the public. Today, a respect that comes before you, right, Mr. Nathan Sanchez, for his years of service to Taos County and citizens. Mr. Sanchez has accepted a job offer from the town of Taos to serve as a county house planning director, a new position that Mr. Sanchez began in the lower of April. Mr. Sanchez began serving with Taos County 13 years ago, serving in capacities of planning director and chief planner. I had always prided myself, in fact, that the Taos County planning department was one of the few departments with little or no turnover. However, with the departure of Mr. Sanchez, the retirement of two employees, the relocation of three employees, including Mr. Sanchez, to other entities, the planning department has restructured itself into two to five new employees within a three-year period, with the anticipation of an additional new employee, with a possible job opening of either chief planner or senior planner. Over many years, Mr. Sanchez commuted to Taos from his hometown of San Luis, Colorado, on a positive 130-mile round trip. Through his tenure, our Taos County and Mr. Sanchez served Taos County and citizens in many different capacities. To this credit, there were planning commission meetings that would be close to 10:00 PM later, when Mr. Sanchez returned home and will be back at work on time the next morning. I would be leaving the meeting the same arrival requested tired and thinking, oh, gosh, Nathan still had an hour of driving time. Nathan, the late Gary Bigel, and I attended several in my school league zone official conferences, meetings, and trainings, but we observed some pretty unusual things. One meeting in particular was when there was a controversial item on the agenda or due to an overflow crowd, the meeting was held in the Taos County Agricultural Building, where some unusual displays of opposition were expressed. Nathan, you and I performed numerous sign inspections throughout the county, worked on many projects, and met with many, many individuals. The assistance and guidance that you provided to me, planning staff, and the county is appreciated. Working alongside an individual for so many years, you really learn a lot about the person, including the personal life and that of their family. If the opportunity presented itself, Nathan would probably be one of those persons who would have become a manager. The friendship and memories that have been created are really priceless. We acknowledge that your new job has really taken me down the street, and I appreciate that you guys are available to any questions that we may have regarding the projects that you are working on. Thank you. Thank you for everything, and good luck in your new position as a county house planning director. On behalf of the Taos County Board of County Commissioners, County Manager Hamid, Deputy Manager Martinez, County Attorney Mr. Otio, the management team, and staff, congratulations on your new job, and thank you for 13 years of service to Taos County and citizens.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. The governing body in Taos County, the Board of County Commissioners, have you recognized your recognition, Mr. Sanchez, and commitment as Taos County employee to the citizens of Taos County, and our communities bestowed this special recognition as having served as a Taos County employee for 13 years. Your contribution and service is greatly appreciated. Thank you for your great job.
Nathan. Nathan, say if you were here. Say if you were, Nathan. Come on. We're gonna miss you here.
I really enjoy working with all of you. I do not agree to projects together, and like I said, I'm willing to help you in any way. Thank you, Nathan. Thank you.
Nathan, can you please come up over here for a second? I just have one story to tell about the experience of Nathan that I had. We went to Association of Counties Conference in Albuquerque, and Nathan and I felt like we really wanted to see what Albuquerque looked like late at night and see if we could see any innovation that he... We got hungry, and I introduced Nathan to Whataburger. He's never been to St. Matt since. I don't want to go for another Whataburger trip. Thank you, Nathan, for your great...
Happy to meet that man.
Mr. Otio.
So, Chairman, our next presentation is to Renee Valdez. Renee was reluctant to be here today, and then I told her, if you don't show up over the token new box, and she's gonna make you come over here. Suzanne Valdez is her new supervisor. You want to see a friend through Suzanne? She's here. And we are set for Renee DeLuis. She's going to the district attorney's office. It's a new position that we created. Renee has worked in human resources in the middle of the county for over 17 years. She's also worked with various county managers throughout her time until the human resources became a formal department, which first started the county manager and HR were pretty much one and the same, and as time evolved, it became its own department, and Renee has grown. I used to directly supervise Renee as HR director, and she has a lot of institutional knowledge that we didn't miss, probably since she's been gone, probably texted her about 10 times, but immediately missed, or it might be, but we decided on this, and glad she was still willing to avail herself to me and to the rest of the HR staff, and we have a presentation...
Present yourself.
With great honor and recognition, commendable, dedicated service, you are truly Taos County's finest. Thank you for 17 years you've given to Taos County. Your tireless work ethic and professionalism has set the tone for the rest of the employees. Presented to Renee Valdez with pride, respect, and love. You will always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in all your future endeavors. Thank you for going above and beyond servicing the citizens of Taos County.
Well, thank you guys very much. I have grown here at Taos County for 17 years. I have been... I'm just gonna get emotional. I did part of the once vice here, and I know I did a part of the high bosses of many of the employees that have gotten to know that. I've learned a lot, and I respect the county quite a bit, and I will always be a part of Taos County with the staff.
I have stories. No. I don't know.
I'm just saying, well, for a restaurant.
Sure the chairman of these stories, but me?
Yeah.
Our next presentation, Mr. Trukey will help me present this. We also have a member, a funding individual, leaving the county for retirement, Mr. Solomon Viva. Stay forward.
What can I say about Solomon? Now, when I took over the program four years ago, when we took over the senior program four years ago from the nonprofit, I had already met Solomon before when I was the county commissioner. He worked with me at the road department. Well, he worked at the road department when I was there, and he was a outstanding young worker then. And when I came to the senior center, he came up and says, "Son, so you're my boss, huh?" So, I looked forward to working with you. He told me, he said that I'm here to help you, whatever I need to do. And you know what? In these four years that we've had the opportunity to have Solomon with us, he's one of the best employees that we've ever had the opportunity to work with. The senior's a door, and the senior still asks for him. It was always about Solomon with him. They would tell me, "You better take care of Solomon, Mr. Trukey." You know, "Oh, we'll come after you." So, it's not hasn't been the same since, and it really hasn't been the same since Solomon left. We miss him sorely. I know our staff here was very, very grateful and happy to have Solomon with us and as a coworker. And man, I hate to see you go, Solomon. I know you're leaving for a personal reason. I understand that, and I certainly hope we can find somebody to replace Solomon, because those shoes are pretty big, and I don't know if we're gonna find somebody with big enough feet to fill those shoes and buddy. So, I really, really appreciate everything you did for our program. We couldn't have been a successful program without your help. I know I needed your help when we first started, and I saw a lot of questions, what are we doing here? What are we doing here? No, Mike, no, 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 no. This might have better do it. So, he actually trained me quite a bit when we first took over, and for that, I'm grateful. And I just hate to see you go, and I hope you continue to come to the center just to visit. I won't put you in a work background. I won't even have you volunteer, Solomon. I just want you to hang out with me, drink a cup of coffee, okay? All right? So, with that, I'd like to read the certificate that the board commissioners might present to you, and it says, "With great honor and recognition, commendable and dedicated service, you are truly Taos County's finest. Thank you for the five years you have given Taos County. Your tireless work ethic and professionalism has set the tone for the rest of the employees. Presented to Mr. Solomon Viva. With pride, respect, and love, he will always have a home here. We wish you the best of luck in your future endeavors. Thank you for going above and beyond servicing the citizens of Taos County." So, Solomon, thank you. And again, I hope we can certainly find somebody to replace you, because it's gonna be tough.
Appreciate that. Okay? I have a few words.
Sure, go ahead. Live on, but I take this with me. Congratulations.
Thank you very, very much.
I want to say, thank you for the county manager, the county commissioners, and for my favorite boss, Mr. Mike Trujillo, and the staff. It was a nice, pleasant time to work with everybody here at the courthouse and all the seniors, and I wanted to thank Rowan, and I wanted to thank Renee and Jason, and then another one, so I wanted to thank my sister, Bertha, and Fernando, and over for taking me to my doctors in San Faye, and everybody around here. I thank you very much, and I want to thank Mr. Sandara, and everybody. I thank you very much, and I appreciate it. It was nice working, all of you guys, especially my favorite boss.
So, now, if you need a ride to the doctors, we can help you. They call us. How's Dr. and Professor's view of you, Solomon? All right? Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Next to Ms. Lori Weathers, we'll be coming up to Rowan to make his presentation. This week is E911 Dispatchers for National Telecommunicators Week. So, we wanted to honor our employees. Dominic's not here because he's upmanning E911, so we have most of our employees here this morning, they're bored with the presentation, but I wanted to thank our employees, because they're the true first responders. They get the call before anybody else, and they go through a lot, and they live these calls, so I'll turn it over to Lori.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager, all present. When you think of public safety, you always think of the first responder on the scene: law enforcement, fire departments, emergency medical services. But in reality, the true first responders are these individuals you see before you. In honor of National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, I am here to shed a little light on the dispatchers for Taos County. They are known as the voice in the dark. If I may ask, will you please close your eyes? Imagine, if you will, a phone ringing, and when you answer, it is a mother that cannot find her child. She is begging for your help. Another phone rings. It is a homeowner, and their house is on fire. Another phone rings. It is someone that is in dire need of medical attention. You get everyone headed to the correct locations, but you never find out what happens, though. Did the mother find her child? You know the fire got put out, but is the homeowner not homeless? Did the person needing medical services live? Open your eyes. These individuals, before you go through this every day, every hour, and every minute, no holidays, no weekends off, missed family events when the complex gets put on lockdown, and yes, even on two-hour delays, they are always there to answer the next call. These dispatchers are your true first responders.
With great honor and recognition, commendable and dedicated service, we're truly Taos County's finest, presented to you, Taos County E911 Dispatchers, who have served credibly during the times of emergency by dispatching with honor to the Taos County constituents. The certificate is given by the Taos County Board of Commissioners on April 16th, 2019. Grateful appreciation to outstanding service. Thank you for going above and beyond servicing Taos County. Special, it's presented to Prisa Martinez. Christopher Calhoun. Kirk Mahill.
I'm glad you're in here. We had you last night. And the area is at the Academy, so we have three of our...
Amanda J. Archuleta. Nina Abreu. Also have one for Dominic, who mentioned himself, dispatch. And then I know we're not gonna take a picture here, and then we want, they're gonna go outside of the commission meeting, it continues. I think I take a group photo for our Facebook page and...
New shirts.
The new shirts.
Thank you all for your service. We're done. We have item 7, this is citizens' concerns. We have citizens who come forward, state their name, and they have five minutes. The commission will be in action, provided we will have that very to give to our administrative staff, and maybe we can help the citizens on the concerns. You're on this call.
Good morning. My name is Debbie Fromm. I want to assure everybody who are in the commission today that I appear today as a private citizen of Taos County. I took this day off in order to be before you as a concerned citizen. In Matthew 6, verses 5 and 6, and we're all familiar with that, Jesus did not agree with public prayer, and when you pray, you must not be like the hypocrites, but they love to stand and pray in the synagogues and at the street corners, that they may be seen by others. Truly, I say to you, they have received a reward. But when you pray, go into your room and shut the door, and pray to your Father, who is in secret, and your Father, who sees in secret, will reward you. I believe in the power of prayer. There is no denying that prayer can often bring forth a positive outcome. At the last commission meeting, I felt that my voice was silenced. A vote took place before I was heard. I was mentioned that prayer, this is my personal opinion, my perception, may have helped changing an individual's decision. Citizens who come before commission meetings to address personal matters such as variances, permits, licenses, budgetary issues, or questions, should not be concerned that the outcome of decision-making may be based on the fact that prayer may have brought forth a decision. I believe it's inappropriate for public officials who hold taxpaying positions should share or imply that their decision may have been based on prayer. It makes me question if future decisions may be based on religious beliefs and not honoring the laws of the state of New Mexico and the Constitution of the United States. If this is the case, then perhaps public service is probably not for you. I also felt personally attacked when it was mentioned that Republican sheriffs and the NRA started the opposition to the House bill issues. What did the Republican Party and the NRA have to do with the decisions the sheriffs of the state made? I have no clue. They were following the oath they took when they were sworn into office. The comment was delivered with what I felt, again, my personal opinion, disgust and disdain. I'm a Republican. I am a Republican. I don't see myself as a disgusting individual. I found the comments from someone whom I admire very much, extremely offensive and disappointing. Your decisions have been made, and you will have to work with the outcome your votes will bring. Your decisions have been made and you will have to work with the outcome your votes will bring. I am disappointed that I felt silenced. I've lived in Taos for six years. During this time, I have experienced individuals telling me that my opinion does not matter because I'm not from Taos or in Taosania. I live here, I work here, I pay taxes here, I shop from local vendors before I go anywhere else. I will no longer remain quiet. It's not right at this age to be made to feel this way, that I have to remain quiet. While going through the history of our country, the last time Americans were told to be quiet and to what they were told it was a revolution. We must be careful to not judge each other's beliefs just because you don't like our president or someone else's party affiliation. I don't always agree with the president, but I also respect the office of the President of the United States. Therefore, he has my respect. While the bills being enforced, I would like to see Taos County make budgetary increases to our law enforcement officials' office. These bills are going to cost Taos County additional monies on what I believe, again, my personal opinion, as a private citizen. Future storage facilities, manpower, and they may possibly cost me, a law-abiding citizen, additional monies. My modern life is to walk in peace in word and deed. In the future, I will be coming forth and voicing my opinion more often and refuse to remain quiet any longer. Taos County, in my opinion, needs to become and step up and be more proactive towards their citizens. Bringing jobs that are not in the service industry. Manufacturing jobs. Commit to possibly oil or gas exploration, water exploration, something. It costs money to live here in Taos, and a large portion of the citizens can barely make ends meet. I don't, you don't have to respond to any of my comments. I'm not looking for any type of validation. I know what's in my heart, I admire every single one of you. I've dealt with all of you at one time or another. You all got elected. My mother passed away two months ago, a very smart woman, Hispanic woman. And she said the success of a government, local, state, United States, is based on, in her mind, and she had a master's in economics. She followed the money, you follow the money. And I'll let it go. But thank you so much for listening to me, I do still admire every one of you. But I needed to get this on my chest. I'm very, very, extremely disappointed. Thank you. And I don't need any answers from any of you. Thank you.
Anyone else who sees this? Got one? Okay.
Good morning, my name is Paul Figueroa. I'm the current chairperson of the Taos County Art and Artifacts Review Committee. It's a pleasure to be here. Thank you Commissioner Gaiagos, Commissioners, County Hip Manager Grant, Romeo, and County Staff. Very quickly, I want to take some of the five minutes to review the accomplishments of your Taos County Art and Artifact Review Committee. I think they're very significant. As you look around this Commissioners Chamber, and you travel elsewhere through county buildings, at this complex, you see historic photographs depicting Taos County. We, our committee members, were instrumental in securing that grant from a private foundation. And I think it's a wonderful addition in terms of public art to this complex. We were also involved with the request for proposal in the selection of the John Swazlo sculpture, which sits in the center of your complex courtyard. And we were the main contact and coordination for the gift from the Ted Eegre estate of Flight of Wind, which sits prominently in front of the county building. I also want to acknowledge, however, that those accomplishments are only done through the partnership and coordination of your admirable staff, which are assigned to be a part of the Taos County Art and Artifact Review Committee. I come before you today to make an inquiry on the status of the funds allocated by the state to the senior center. Over $1,275,000 were granted to the county. And I come to you wondering if there was an allocation applicable in that agreement for public art. That would be 1% of the art funds. A total of some $12,000. If it was not applicable, I'm here today to urge the staff working with the committee to set aside similar amount of funds as you move forward in fiscal year 2020 with your operating budget. It's very important that the county continues leadership role for art and public places. I also, in closing, would like to beseech you and the staff to finally put labels up on these two prominent pieces of sculpture. It's not going to cost very much money. In my understanding of the procurement code, probably just the department head needs to sign off on producing labels to identify the artist and the work, which are so prominently displayed on your property. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning. I'm inquiring about what's the status of Philly Moon Sanchez Park. It's had barriers in it, trench, I don't know. I haven't inquired, I haven't gone there personally, but there's a lot of critters riding around. And I'm retired from that business, but I used to keep, I used to keep the critters out of Philly Moon Sanchez and Barra. And I was noticing in Barra, there is some curragi invasions there. And they can have free breeding cycles a year. It's a liability issue. If anybody gets... Anyways, I'm not here to lecture, I'm just wondering what's the status of the critter removal or the critter extermination in both parts. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? We're going to close all the comments at 9:39. And we'll move on in the agenda to item A. Item A is approval of March 19, 2019, regular meeting minutes. Commissioners, you have just three minutes. So anything you want to our, for to take now, most to approve, then it's the last second. Regular meeting.
I'll second, Mr. Chair.
Motion is second. Have been made, send off, please call.
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blankenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Gaiagos?
Yes. Thank you Commissioners, we'll move on. Item 9 is the presentations, A to C. Item A is a presentation regarding... I'll second. Item 9 is a presentation regarding the closure of Forest Route 556, approved. We have reports today, Mr. Commissioner Martinez. And Tony Montes, of order.
I think, Mr. Chairman, going body, thank you very much for allowing us to be on your agenda today. We have probably some individuals from Ojoliente. Maybe I am Tony Montes. I think they're a little shy to come before you guys. I think it's a little intimidating. We see so many serious faces. But nonetheless, this is in regards, you come here just to basically invoke your help in providing a resolution to have access to Forest Route 556 in Ojoliente. The board is pretty much familiar with what took place in White Peaks Stanley Corporation. Now we have another corporation here by the name of Frye's that have sealed 556. And it's, that road has been properly since the metro became a state. There was a portion of it that relates to a homestead. So obviously you have to use that road to access ingress and egress. And it's become a problem since they sealed the gate gates and everything. I provided some information, pictures, and so on, so forth. The forest, yes, the Forest Service has identified that eastment in their travel management plan for a number of years. If not, since they took over that portion under the Forest Service. Yet, we installed some cattle guards at the time with the authorization of those private landowners in the Forest Service. Right after those cattle guards were installed, they put up two different gates. And two-thirds of that eastment, I believe, is within Taos County. And the other third lies in Rio Arriba. And one of the things, based on the Stanley result that went before the High Court and remanded back to the district court to execute that order from the High Court. So I think there is precedence in that regard to be able to have these individuals open that 556 road. And the reason for the resolution is, I spoke to some of the staff attorneys when they had that hearing initially, and the commissioners from Morat in Las Vegas to be able to gain support to open that eastment or try to open it at the very least, is to provide a resolution. The Attorney General and order staff is willing to have the district guard if we have the support of this governing body. And we also have the support of Senators Sizneros and Senator Martinez from Rio Arriba. So I think we have a good, some influence with some of these individuals that are in positions of authority. And I'll... Do you want to come over with it?
Mr. Chairman. Yes. Mr. Rodriguez, when did this gate go up?
I'm sorry?
When did this gate go up?
I think Tony Montes is the one that's got more of the information. I think it's been up for a couple of years, I think.
Because I haven't hunted there many seasons.
I think, Mr. Commissioner, I think it's been up for at least two, three years maybe?
I have to draw the two, three years.
Three years, and it's provided, you know, my nephew, my son's... My nephew's son was hurt, we were riding down in House last spring, he got hurt. And it took us some time to be able to recover him from that place. So if you have an ambulance or an injury on some individual, a fire, it's going to create a lot of disaster. The other thing is that I don't think that they actually, based on the information that we have from the Forest Service, they have the authority to block that eastment. And I know that Tony provided more information, I believe, to the commissioners. You've seen the pictures that we have there? So it's been approximately three years since that closure took place.
The county days count on that report?
I think it's February the 10th, 2017, or prior to that.
Sixteen. Sixteen. Tony Montes, Director DeCresis, thank you for addressing this concern of the public in Taos County area. Thank you, Chairman Gaiagos, and the rest of the staff and everyone else. There was a series of things that did occur over time. It didn't, the cattle guards didn't walk right away, the gates didn't walk right away. There was some fencing, the people or the person, the private landowner, put up surrounded that started keeping people out of his property. This particular road has been going through that property for at least 100 years to get more, for access into the public property in the back of Forest Service lands. As you well know, the hunting, the grass period of what gathering and amounting of herbs and everything else that people collect from Ojoliente in Taos, it used to be part of the chili line. The chili line, access to the chili line, Chula Bulo or in the Barranca, where people would actually travel and move up there. There's, this particular piece of property along with Stephen Fry is a homestead, part of a homestead. It's 160 acres. It transacts two counties, which is interesting, Taos and Rio Arriba counties. So that makes it more difficult to respect. The other thing that I think this individual coming from outside of the state did not realize is this state has restrictive rights associated with a road being in place for over 10 years. Or the person knowing that that road had been there would have, the public would have access through there because of that reason that the state has, based on today law, the states that, you know, you should permit folks to go through it if it's been there, has been there, and you're well aware of it. And so maybe it's a matter of principle. Folks from that area are trying to get through, have to go around. There's more to it. Maybe wants to add more about the issues that are surrounding the lawful, unlawful use of, going around it. It's not, it's a new created road because you have to go around it. Those types of things make it interesting. Plus you have to cross the Royal, so it's not accessible for lots of different folks. Howling wood, for instance, you can tear up your pickups or frames there as well. It's almost impossible to take a loaded truck with loaded cattle through there because of that mechanical issue that you're going and twisting frames and twisting trailers in those highways. Anyways, I don't know what the commission can do to address this issue. I know it's probably a legal issue. The DA has somewhat addressed it, but Stephen Fry has a lawyer that has articulated being harassed and that kind of thing because he wants his private land fenced off, which is, you know, it's understandable, everybody wants their property fenced off and/or a wall built, just like Donald Trump.
I don't think it's only a principle, a matter of principle, it's also a legal issue. And I think the, one of the things that that one of the staff attorneys from the DA's office has indicated that if we have a resolution, again, from this commission, then we'll be able to provide that documentation to to my guest, Cecily, who's got one of the staff attorneys. And they're wanting to accommodate and vote in court if it's all required. One of the things, we try to compromise with the rights insofar to build a fence at our expense and to have that ingress and egress, have the fence on each side of the road. And no expense to them, and I don't think that we've gotten any replies. I don't think they want to do anything in good faith, as we've explained it a couple of, two, three times. But DA, we've been with the district attorney's office here for probably over a year, might not, might. Almost three years, I guess, go ahead.
My name's Betty Higgins, dead from Ojoliente. I want to thank you all for hearing our concerns. And so yeah, the Forest Service did a survey. Road 558 comes into the backside where the cattle went after leases, but the road's impassable with anything large. It's full of sand traps and, so you can't get through there. And the other road that Mr. Montes mentioned is an illegal road that Stephen Fry built around his land. And it's not very accessible either. So these people can't get their house in and out, like he said, in emergency. There's not much more to say about it, except that it's a hardship on many ones who is using that road, and lots of people have. I want to thank you.
Can I ask a question? Do you have any questions? Commissioner, floor, any questions?
Commissioner Omero? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is Mr. Frye a realtor?
I don't think that Mr. Frye is a realtor. From my understanding, he is employed in most areas.
Through the DA.
Okay. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to have our attorney maybe offer some advice as to where we can go with this particular situation.
Commissioner, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the, I think the Attorney General's office is the right place of that for the US Attorney to be the proper legal authority. It is not a county road, which if it was a county road, it would be on us to make sure they stay clear. We can facilitate... We can facilitate, but I think that they stay using law for, for, to ensure the working of defense that this stays open. So we, but we, I'm happy to take those calls.
Commissioners.
I've, I've been on this road numerous times, many, many years, and shot to see if it'll lay in, and that's all.
Commissioner.
Mr. Chairman. Commissioner. If you can get us a sample resolution, I think we should bring it up for discussion. Because I've heard that the Attorney General needs those kinds of resolutions to move forward.
I think the indication that I got from one of the staff attorneys and the commissioners from Monae and Las Vegas, that if we do have the support of this governing body, then I will have some, at least some leverage, so to speak, legal leverage, to be able to, to proceed on with the, even if it comes to litigation. Hopefully, it does not, maybe we can resolve it through some form of compromise. But if not, as a last resort, we're going to have to go be in court. And there's all, you know, there's a easement in, in White Peaks. Not only does that, I've seen cases up in Red River, so they have Forest Service, private land, and it's landlocked, and it's easement blocked. And I think Commissioner Vaios is pretty much familiar with some of those, those areas. I have, I'm a permanent here in Oaxaca, and I'm a permanent here at the ski valley, and we see all kinds of easements being blocked. I have an issue there with, with Patterson's up at the ski valley. So it's become a constant thing over and over again. If we don't resolve it today, it's gonna, you know, we just need to, to, to take some legal action if there is a need, a need to.
Commissioner Hell, the White Peaks.
The White Peaks, I think, was, was important probably for the last five, six years. I think Commissioner Vaios is worth admitting here simply because Donald, I spoke with Donald, I think he told me it was five or six, maybe even more. It took a lot of process to be able to resolve it. And I says, will you help us? He says, I mean, I just want to cut these locks. And I says, I'll be a tailor. He says, well, you can bail yourself out. But in all seriousness, it took some time, but at least we have that, that precedence that the courts, the High Court felt that it, there is access to those easements, and they shouldn't be blocking those easements, and have been in existence for years and years and years, since Mexico, before New Mexico became a state.
Commissioner, Randy, you may also want to check into, I believe it was something about four or five years ago, maybe six, that the legislature passed regarding access in public lands, like if you're, there's public lands and public lands and the private in between, you've got to get access for hunters, forest owners and stuff to go through. I, I don't remember the bill number or what, came from a case out of Thomas County regarding hunting unit, 30th, if I remember right. Same sort of thing happened, and you could not actually get to public lands in the back of the hunting area. Someone did this exact same thing. So I, I, I don't know how you would look into that, Randy, but I do remember hearing something about that, that are legislative.
And I think you're, you're absolutely right, Mr. Franco. I think one of the vedos, that was a, pretty much an active participant there at White Peaks, indicated, I thought it was in Las Vegas, I could be mistaken, but there is some form of precedence in that, in that regard to some of these locked easements.
And, and Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Franco, thanks. I, I do remember that. And, and the main issue will be, as these gentlemen have already discussed, there is a lot of good precedents in New Mexico for prescribed easements like this. If something has existed in perpetuity like many of these has and been used for generations, then that is sufficient precedent to keep it open for public use. And it's just a matter of who the best party, you know, any, any user could suit, but of course, it's expensive and burdensome for individuals to take that on. So the idea is finding the right entity that has the best shot at this.
There's an additional one in Barra La Canyon. Tony, are you familiar with that? Barra La Canyon, or, or TP, any situation?
I'm not familiar with that.
From the bottom, you can't get through. And when I checked with the assessor's office, his person has crazy rights. They don't actually own property.
The, some of the information that I got from the assessor's office in, in Rio Arriba is, there's another portion, I think, that either, in Amadera, part of that is in Rio Arriba County, as I understood. And I think that that might have been the section 6771 that you're referring to, Council, perhaps?
Well, and, and, and case law, there are many cases that have transpired over here as both between private property owners for easements and for governments against private owners to maintain valid easements. So in both cases, the courts have found that it's been open and obvious for a period of 10 or more years that you can prevail and private property for decides to close it off, even if you don't have a formal easement.
You've given us a lot of hope there, also simply because I think that easement has been in existence before New Mexico was a state, since they used to use that to the chili line and some other, or to that homestead that existed for, you know, 1800s.
And obviously, their bill, the price will have their side of pace, and that's where it gets expensive.
That's true, that's true. But what, I won't take any more of the Commissioner's time, we just, we just try to, hopefully we can work at those spots.
Commissioner, thank you. Thanks, Emilio. You know, I think Randy's here, are we finding antiques willing to bring the prescribed easement case is going to be critical. Did you get an indication from the Attorney General's Office that they could be willing to bring that case and that they wanted support from this board?
Well, yes, absolutely. I did, I was in that hearing, and they had a, in this report for at least a couple of days, full days. And they told us initially, in fact, I have the information of their cards to be able to get a hold of them, but I guess to a civil division that would be involved with the attorney at the time, I didn't know who the county attorney would be the person to get a hold of. But they're willing to accommodate us in that regard if we have the support of this problem.
That's, that's important information, and I hope that we can give that support and encourage the Attorney General to bring this case along with all of those others.
Commissioner, one more, is there some, may we obtain the council's name and number and, and provide to the AG's Office to say, is it want to coordinate that plan, perhaps?
Sure. And hope, hope you all calm down after this, after you're finished.
I'm pretty much done, if there's any other additional questions.
Commissioner Romero, the other question, Mr. Martinez, is this area within a land rent or something that was, that area that was formerly a land rent?
Normally, all these northern New Mexico land have been land rents, you know, for centuries. So I'm, I'm very certain that it used to be, Piedal Lumbre was part of that, San Ignacio, San Pedro, some of those, and I forget exactly the name of that land rent that used to exist. It was, it was more than a land rent.
So with most of, with some of these land rents, I remember, there was a certain land rent in Yanom and Ranjos, through a decision that was made many, many years ago, those roads are supposed to be kept open for public use and for other areas of, of the land rent. And so that is something that you should look at as well. If, if you look at the historical documents of this particular land rent that this property is on, that may give you a better clue as to what we can do with regards to, to this road. We might not even have to go to court with it.
I think that, Commissioner Romero, I think that we've provided a lot of information to the DA's Office here. And I, and the good news, I think, is that we've spoken to some of the public officials in, in, in Rio Arriba and here in Taos, and they're willing to, to come on board if there is a need to, you know, to, to go to court. I think that one of the staff attorneys indicated to me about a month ago that it would be an, probably an easier process since the Stanley case has been resolved. And I don't think it's been appealed, or it was appealed to the High Court and it was amended back to, to execute on that order.
That definitely worth looking at the land rent documents.
Okay, very well. Do you have a historian in, in, in the county that we can access some information?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a historian perhaps to be able to, to recover some of those?
I would imagine, Randy, it would be available through District Courts, if any cases have taken place within that area, jurisdiction. The, it's historical research in any land rent, it's all a matter of when was it last done and has somebody left breadcrumbs to reconstruct the research? Because you, you're going back so long that they may all be there, and they turn from Spanish to English. And so it's a matter of, has anybody maintained those, brought those records up to date so that they can be easily accessible? They're there and they can be found, but it's one of those situations where those things will happen and be disrupted in many cases.
Counsel, I think a lot of those, there's a documentation that would relate to that according to the Forest Service Management Plan. Those easements have been in existence for, going back since the Forest Service obtained that, that portion of that land rent.
Thank you. Right, here's, I think if you can, just.
It's on maps, old old maps that is, from late 1800s. We have some of those maps.
All right. Well, I keep it, Randy, with your conversation that day, by those resolutions, who are coming, bring that into board, let it kind of start to be natural with that, and that's what we need.
Commissioner, Vaios, if I can, maybe you have more information than we do regarding the, you know, with the, associated with the counties. Maybe, who would be the person to get a hold of in Monae and Las Vegas?
We'll, we'll give, we'll give direction to Mr. Romero, go forward with that, President Commission, request of his permission.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner. And good to see you back, Mr. Ray Carpio.
Mr. Martinez. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item is Iain Beane's presentation from Commissioner Tada, House County Legislature Representative.
We have one office. Good morning, Chairman Vaios and members of the commission, Mr. Emilio. I'm here this morning just to give you a complete overview. And Commissioner Franco just mentioned, I should price this electronically, I sent you a preview last week of what I did, and, but again, I'm just getting to know how you work and what you're wanting. But this is a brief highlight of the end of the session. Attached to find three-year application, the final overview of the 2019 budget, which includes House Bill 2 and other fiscal overviews. And that's the first attachment that I gave you. It includes everything that, all the actions taken through Conference Committee, vetoes through House Bill 2, the vetoes on the House Bill 2 Junior on the Senate and the House, and also the vetoes on capital outlay. So that's for you. And then the second large piece of information is the list of 139 bills that the legislature passed that either directly or indirectly affect House County and other municipalities. And I just, if I could, Mr. Chairman, divert a little bit to Mr. Martinez's presentation, there are several bills that were passed this session by the governor dealing with land rent issues that maybe Mr. Martinez might want to look into and are legal factors as well, that may have some implication in helping the situation. And also, the last five, six years, there's been a multitude of bills during the legislature that deal with easements on private property going into public land, and something that a multitude of agricultural entities have taken up. But there, there has been some precedent set in some of those, just the side diversion. Of course, the session ended on, on Saturday, March 16th. Governor had till the 5th of April to act on legislation. She vetoed 15 pieces of legislation and 13 pieces fell within the pocket veto frame. And then June 14th, which was just two days ago, was the effective date of legislation, not a general appropriation or bill carrying any emergency clause to be implemented. Legislative Council Service is going to start meeting here, first of May, middle of May, to start putting together committees and assign committee memberships. And also Legislative Finance will start meeting, just to put together their preliminary schedule for the session. Total appropriated was 4.2, 4,231,100, 4.2 million. The historic courthouse wasn't met with a lot of enthusiasm, not because our legislators didn't think that it was, you know, a viable project, but because we got the CBDG monies, they felt that we already had enough money and they chose to really focus more on the Veteran Cemetery, which has been something that a lot of veterans groups were focusing on. So it wasn't because they weren't interested, they just felt we had already had some base money for that, set aside. Veteran Cemetery, of course, we had asked for 4 million. We ended up with 3.2 million, which is a significant amount. Both Senators Sizneros and Senator Gonzalez are committed to try and get the additional 800,000 next legislative session. And if budget projections stay as they are, there will probably be a very good possibility to get the, in that next session. We had, the county had asked for $150,000 for the sheriff's department vehicle. 100,000 was funded. Now, as I look along, being who worked and worked with Senators Sizneros and Gonzalez, they actually put the amount of 150,000 that went forward. But as they were debating at Conference, at Conference Committee and other committees, the total amount for capital outlay, the governor was short about a million, so they did a sweep across everybody's capital outlay request and took pieces. And unfortunately, the 50,000, the additional 50,000 was taken and moved somewhere else. The same thing with the body scanner device for 195,000. Same thing happened, they did a sweep, and so in that, we lost about 145,000. Ambulance, there wasn't a lot of discussion around that. I think they, the legislators, as I talked to them, wanted to put more of those monies into the scanner and into the police vehicle. And as far as the Sunday Stubble Fire Tender, it might discussion was Representative Gonzalez. Apparently, there was a group that came to him and said they really didn't need it. So he just chose not to, because of the feedback from community, didn't put the money into that. So there was, there was a little controversy there, some folks wanting and others didn't, but with the group that went to him suggested that they really didn't need it. Community centers, 200,000 dollars was requested, 50,000 was granted for Talba, 100,000 for Central. And then in addition to that, the Taos Senior Center, Center of Construction, I guess for the final construction part of that, 637,733, an additional 43,397 for Senior Center improvement.
That came as representative, Mr. Keith, for you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Commissioner Franco. I remember the meeting we had, we changed our priorities to have the body scanner. I remember the meeting we had, we changed our priorities to add the body scanner. I don't remember the meeting changing the priority to include community centers worth the senior improvements, even though they're all well and good, it's just I thought we got a policy to reform.
Can you correct it, Commissioner? Mr. Tantana, can you elaborate?
Yes, because the list that I got ultimately had a little money, 150,000 in our priorities that we moved forward to, both our legislators, that included some funding for the community centers.
Chairman.
Yes?
I think Commissioner Frandberg is asking a question in a different way. This body did not put in for Topaw or put in for Sarah. She made the numbers one on her own and put in for Topaw and Sarah, and that's what the official Frandberg preference is.
Okay.
And the 637,000 was from the father?
Yes.
Geoban?
Geoban.
Yeah, Chairman, you know, those are favorites of the legislators, and they're going to do it regardless of whether it's on our system. Just wondering.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I had a discussion with Mr. Hameo at one point. Something for you to consider, since we have many community centers around the county, maybe there may be a way of collectively meeting with all of them, having them put together maybe a priority list that could come forward to the county.
Perhaps.
And, you know, it would at least, you know, have that communication with them. They can come up with their priorities, and then you can pull a priority list from the county that would go, let's say, 250,000, I mean, off the top of my head, that would go to our legislators. That way, if you were funded, if not the full amount, a portion of that, then you can maybe at least divide it, you know, to the different community centers, and everyone would get a little piece to do whatever is priority for them, whether it's minor or major. But that may be something for the commission and Mr. Hameo to contemplate, to make the process maybe a little easier. Because one of the feedbacks I did get, and we've got, you know, a really great opportunity with both the senator and the representative in key positions now as chair, vice chairs of both Senate Finance and House Appropriation. But one of the things that did come to my attention from them is like, do you have a process of pulling all your priorities together? Because he says, I've got this person from this community, this person from that community, and it could be various issues, but this may be an example of one of those issues with community centers, where you could pull something together as a priority to make it a little more streamlined. Just a suggestion, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Actually, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea. I think that as we try to move forward with this, let's make sure that we have complete support among the commission as we're trying to develop this. In the past, we've supported each other, thinking that, you know, I get the idea, everybody can get 50,000 dollars each, that doesn't get you anywhere, and you continue to ask and ask and ask. But if we don't prioritize and tackle a community center that we feel favorable to show needs and work, that we would ask that jointly.
Yes.
In the past, and I'm saying this only because we've had reservations with commissioners that are committed to pull money in a road project, and then asked to be pulled the money back out after the commission has all agreed to do. So we really want to make sure that it's a sound process, that everybody's comfortable with knowing how this, how this would be developed. And if we all can agree to that, then it makes it that much easier to streamline and we ask for funds for, for the senator represented, because I think we just, we had an issue where a few years past, we thought we had a commission support, and we had some assistance. So we want to be sure we might have a commission.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cody Hooks for the customers, has emailed me a couple of times asking for this, when I was presenting with you, please, Chairman, please.
Yes, I'd be happy to do that. And going back to Commissioner Vaeigos, I know in my experience with this over the years, that legislators that are supporting our issues really appreciate when the entities have things pretty well organized, like you said, because then it's our responsibility to help them help us in streamlining that process as it moves through session. And so I just think it's for the future would be great. I provided you with a lot of information here, mainly for your edification. If you have any other questions on it, I know you have a tight agenda, but I'm also available, if any of you have a question and feel you need to give me a call or something to clarify. Commissioner Vaeigos and Commissioner O'Donnell, did you get my response to your email on the 16 million? Was it House Bill Two page 30? I'm not that familiar with it. I apologize, I didn't get to look at that closely, but the governor put about 16.7 million dollars in for law enforcement that would allow them to do a lot more collaborative work, I think, through IT discussions. Sheriff, do you have a little bit more on that or are you familiar with that?
I'm not sure exactly where it's going to be allocated to yet.
Yes.
I think it'll be through the state and then trickle down to the local government.
And that's my understanding, that it will be from there, moving to the different counties and areas of the state, but it was in House Bill Two, in general law, in general funding. Are there any comments or questions?
Commissioners, any others? There are none? Thank you. Commissioner, good presentation. Good job.
And I'll give this to Cody then.
Good job, Mike.
Just to give you an idea of what you're on, that 633,000, that was an application that I submitted. I submitted that last year. Okay, I just had to do a proposal to the state, it ranked number two statewide, so they, the committee approved it to go forward through the legislature, and it was carried out of House Bill Two 80. Now, this money, the general funding money is going to be coming down, and we'll should be getting the grant agreements late July. Unfortunately, there were 36 projects that were actually pre-budgeted for right, right, like a couple of weeks from now. This one wasn't, and about like 80 others weren't. But I spoke with A L T S D, and they're going to be giving out the grant agreements probably the second, third week in July, so we can continue with phase two of building. And that 43,000 was, was from my sister representative to here, because I didn't want to ask Bobby and Carlos, because you all had your priorities. And so Sarah, you know, so she was gracious enough, because she is from originally in that heart, she was able to help us out with that, so we could continue funding of building that building.
And that's for paving?
The 43,000?
Yeah.
Actually, it's for furniture. The 633,000 is for paving, curb and gutter. Actually, some interior work still needs to be done in the building.
Yeah, just so we can build what?
Yeah. But that 43 was for actually furnishing, because we didn't have any money budgeted, and that 633 for the furniture, so that's what that 43,000 was for.
Mr. Trio, is it visible, as you do the parking lot, to have the idea of smaller parking maps as opposed to actual?
I think, I think that's a discussion we could have facility, but right, right?
The reason I came now is, and I was going to talk about this a moment before, but since Mike's here and we're talking money, we're considering waiting to open Senior Center until phase two gets constructed. So Mr. Sanchez, our construction manager, is in the process of putting in a gravel parking lot. Then 632,000 will be for pavement and a patio on the side of the building. So me and Mike have been in conversation this week, but why don't we just hold off, get phase two done, and there's no sense displacing the seniors when the paving comes in, or how to have the paving done on the weekend, which is going to increase that cost to us. And so that's one of the things I was going to mention later on, is that we want to hold off until that gets done. And Mike had mentioned, he did communicate with Barbara Romero at the state to see when those reactive units are coming in. We thought if they were coming in in the next month or two, we would put the project on hold, get the facility built, lined up to go to phase two. So it's going to take a little more months than either me or Mike would like, but we would like to hold off on opening until it's completely done, completely done.
And then the seniors have requested that they want the senior center built completely before they go in, because again, it's a liability issue, whether it's walking in gravel, or if it rains, or something. Also, it makes sense to just get it all done. And also on the Puesta Senior Center, if I might, right, and that, on the Puesta funding that we got, that 688,000, the bonds won't be sold probably not until July. Okay, so we won't see any grant agreements there falling until the, after, you know, probably not till March of next year, because they have to sell those bonds. So, and that 195,000 for a money, that other amount, that's going to be a part of that bond sale, that's going to come out probably not until July or August. So we weren't working on trying to get things done, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, how long do you think the opening will be postponed?
We're looking, if we get, if we get the agreements by, by, by the last week in July, we can get the contracts done with our contractor pretty quick, I'm sure. And then, we're looking at probably late September, October, September, October to go into that building, which will be great. And we want to make sure we start paving when it's warm, we don't want to do it when it's cold, because you're going to have, you're going to have a mess, and so.
And maybe you could put a press release out, or let the Taus News know that the project, that we're not going to move in until September, October.
All right, anything else, Commissioners? Mr. Chairman notes for our manager, Mr. Hameo, is it possible to draft, put together a letter thanking our representatives, including Mr. Eo, for the funding that we did get here at the county?
Chairman, Commissioner, yes, we'll be, I'm going to drop the letter to our legislators in a few minutes.
Thank you. Commissioner. All right, one, Mike, I didn't see, this is a PowerPoint presentation regarding the Taus Department of Fire Department. We have Mr. James.
And before Mr. James starts, Mr. Chief Corbuz and I here, some of you may know that his wife had their third child last week, a baby girl, her name's Kim Lee, and...
What's your name?
Kim Lee.
Kim Lee.
Yeah. Yeah, it's not spelled the way it sounds on his tongue. Kim, so, yes.
All right. Thank you. We wish the family, the Department of Family well, pay the local view service to the county so that they get that good old family time that they rewarded. We're ready?
Good morning, Commissioners. Like our kind of manager said, we regret that Mike Corbuz isn't here, but I'm going to go through this. And this is more for information at this point. Chief Corbuz and myself have been talking about ways we can generate some revenue to support some more paid staff in the fire department, which this would be a good way. So I'll just go through this very quickly, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but if you have any questions, please feel free to interrupt me, and hopefully we'll get through this and have a little more information for you. So the intent of this program is really to create a, a wildfire engine crew that can be sent out on assignments that may not necessarily be here in this area. So we have to be staffed with additional members, but I'll get into all that here in a second. The secondary purpose for this is to generate some revenue to supplement the fire department's budget for paid staff. One of the other things that would be a benefit of this is it's going to create some well-paying jobs here in Taus County, and it's going to also increase the number of fire resources we have in the southwest area, which I believe last summer was a good example of why we need those resources around. So just real quickly, go over what an actual type six engine is. It's a light fire engine, it's designed for wildfire, it's not designed for fire instruction fires. It's small enough to fit up most of the forest roads we have here in the southwest, which I think all of you are familiar with. Typically, it has a crew of two to three firefighters. According to the Forest Service, it needs to be staffed with a minimum of two, but the average staffing number is typically three people. And that's sort of where we pulled all our numbers from, was a staff of three. And again, kind of just talking about, this would be revenue for the fire department to implement some more paid staff. We want to move the county forward in regards to fire safety and fire response, and we believe having some paid staff would accomplish that. We realize that money is tight all throughout the state, and so we're trying to come up with inventive ways to increase our revenue to be able to accomplish that. Again, providing more resources in the area. And the other thing is, this is going to provide some training for our members that they may not be able to get any other way. So the income, and the type six engine typically has an R and P rate of 154 dollars an hour. The R and P stands for the Regional Mobilization Plan, that's going to bring it with the state forestry and national forests, that they will pay this amount per hour for your apparatus if it's called to an incident. A typical shift is 16 hours or 2,464 dollars per shift of income from that engine. Assignment can last up to 14 days for 34,000 dollars, which roughly, about 34,000, 34,000 dollars. Independent on the season, obviously, a very slow lawless season, your engine's not going to be requested as often. In a busy season, we average, just talking to some of the local resources here, about six two-week assignments is fairly average, and that would exceed about 206,000 dollars of income coming in. Now, that's before any of our costs go out, so we'll talk about that. The cost of personnel, kind of talking to some of the local entities around here, we typically pay a firefighter type one, which is sort of your lower level firefighter, entry level firefighter, about 16, 15 hours average. Firefighter type two, which is your more experienced firefighter, engine operator, is about 19 dollars per hour. And then your engine boss, which is the, essentially the engine captain, is in charge of the resource, gets paid about 21, 15 an hour. The total cost per day without overtime is 912 dollars. Because of the 16-hour shifts, you typically hit overtime on the third or fourth day, and that cost goes up to 1368 dollars per shift for the personnel. And that's also one of the reasons why these rates may seem a little low for a firefighter, because they hit that overtime so quickly, and they are entitled to the overtime rates, that's why those rates are just a little lower than what you might expect. We estimate the cost of about 400 dollars a day, and that means fuel, places to stay, if they may be stay overnight, food, things of that nature, that's on the high end, that's a rough estimate, and that's probably on the high end of what it's going to cost per day if the firefighters are out on the fires, about 400 dollars a day. Now, what's nice is you do get reimbursement for your fuel. If your engine travels more than 100 miles to an incident, they get 44 cents per mile beyond that to kind of help recover the cost of fuel and stuff like that. So we'll talk a little bit about the income versus the cost. So the total billable amount per day is 2,400 dollars roughly. And then the total cost per day, including the 400 dollars, the cost of personnel, all that stuff, without overtime is 1312 dollars. So the net revenue per day with no overtime is 1,152 dollars. If we go to the overtime, that increases, and you can see these, essentially you get about 700 dollars per day once they hit that overtime. And this is funds that would be coming in. So the total income for the two-week assignment, including cost of overtime and everything, is roughly about 11,000 dollars of income after costs. And then what we figured out, and we kind of estimate, this is on the low end, if we see six assignments in a year that are at least two weeks each, we're going to see about 66,000 dollars per summer that comes in. That year, that's on the low end, is probably going to be closer to 75,000 to 100,000 dollars, depending on how fruitful we'll be able to operate. So the big cost of this is going to be the startup. We obviously have type six engines in our fire districts around the county, but we need to keep those locally. Those are staff fire volunteers, and those are necessary and critical to our fire response here in the area. And so we would need to purchase a new truck to be able to implement this program. I spoke to H and E, which is a manufacturer of these trucks, just last week, and this engine, picture here, go out the door, ready to go, was 184,950 dollars.
Can I ask to clarify a point, please?
Yes.
Chairman.
Sure.
So Hameo has a type six engine?
I believe so, yes.
How many are there?
There are typically, most of our districts have at least one type six. There are typically, most of our districts have at least one Type 6 brush truck. And so, there are between 10 and 13 brush trucks around the county.
So, this particular program would only be used to go out on assignment, or once we got that truck, can we use it in-house as well, or?
Yes, we could. Essentially, what happens is because this would be an RMP engine, essentially, there's an agreement between state forestry and anything that are going to call it out to incidents, we would receive orders. So, if it was in-house here in the station, and there was a fire here locally, the state forestry has the ability to call for a Type 6 that could come to an incident here locally, or if they need incidents, or they need resources down south, say in the Bosque or something like that, and they don't have the local resources there that are available to respond to it, they could call up to us and say, is your Type 6 available, yes or no? And then, we can send it down there. So, it does not exclude it from operating locally. It just doesn't exclude it from operating elsewhere. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, and so, the current Type 6 engines, they aren't part of this program, or aren't they?
Correct. They are not typically part of this program. The startup cost per firefighter, and we would have to have to hire them to be able to staff these, because again, we don't want to be hurting from our volunteers that are spotting things into your local, you know, to send these guys out. And the typical cost of a firefighter's outfit and a volunteer is about $5,400. That includes all their personal protective equipment, radios, fire shelters, line packs, cans, all the things they would need to operate efficiently for a two-week stay. Equipment is also something we're going to have to factor in a little bit, and we estimate about $30,000 to get all the equipment that we would need to carry on the truck. Hoses, saws, nozzles, things of that nature that are essential to that operation. And the National Wildfire Coordination Group has existed, things that would be required on this engine, and that's where we pulled that number from. So, the total startup cost is about $228,000. That includes the cost of outfit, the personnel, purchase of the truck, and purchase of the equipment that would be needed to operate the truck efficiently.
Any questions? Commissioner, any questions? Commissioner Farrow. James, go back. Through the other questions, the Type 3, you've got a lot of them coming up front?
Yes.
Go back to that one.
Okay. On the pressures on the, on the left that are at the bottom, that's a Type 3. Eventually, after you get this going, and I hope it does, and you've got in and have personnel, and your program is up and running, I would like to see the addition of a Type 3, because without the cost that you would be reimbursed out of a Type 3, it's about $100 an hour. It's actually, I believe, the RMP rate, and this is just what I'm saying, but I believe it's about $190 an hour, so it's about $40 an hour. And this would be used in my urban interface issues. This also has some structural protection capabilities, cost of basic, and that is probably about $400,000, but that's what really gets in demand in an urban interface fire.
And that's the beauty of this program, is that once we get kind of started, the growth potential is much easier, because you already have some of the startup costs, you already have firefighters hired. So, this is a program that could potentially expand to have two or three engines operated internally more than...
Tous and Angel Fire, which have Type 3s.
Type 3s and Type 6s.
And Angel Fire, the Type 6s.
We have, so, Angel Fire, last, last summer, they have two Type 6s and one Type 3 engine and one tender that they send out, and they invoiced over half a million dollars last year to the, to the state. Now, that's before all their costs, but that just kind of shows you what can be accomplished with an RMP program. Commissioner. Thank you.
Thanks, Chairman. So, you know, you're talking about $228,000 startup costs, and somewhere between $67,000 and $100,000 net revenue in one season. That's a very, very favorable return on investment. And getting 40% of your back in the first year, that's a great deal. So, is the plan for the county to make these purchases?
We're initially in the planning stages of this, but...
Chairman, Commissioner, one, yes. This would be something that would have to come out of the reserve account, and it's kind of why I asked Chief Corvus, we should have time to put this presentation together. So, it would be a commitment that we would have to put into the budget to purchase the Type 6 engine and the equipment. And this, as you remember, the, the presentation in January, this type is about to be presented in January, but going forward, this also, you see it as a revenue generator for the county, and also to, within three years, to fully merge EMS and FIRE. Mr. Medina's at the back of the room. So, right now, we're on a 25-year para retirement plan, the ones that have been with us for a while, Mr. Medina. So, if we fully merge it, it will become a 20-year retirement plan, and that's the other plan that they're working on. So, down the road, we can switch the EMS employees to FIRE EMS, the young 20-year plan. So, we need this revenue to help pay the cost of para. So, it's nothing we're going to do overnight, and that's kind of why both Chief Corvus and Commissioner, they want to take it slow, this part of the model, but they're suggesting, okay, this is what we can do in the first year, and eventually, we do want to grow it as Commissioner Farrow suggested.
Well, if the numbers are even close to be right, I think it's a great initiative, you know, aside from, obviously, how we get, I think is a really great idea.
Thanks. Anything else, Commissioner?
So, Mr. Chairman, the startup is $228,000. Does that include personnel, or just the equipment and the purchase of the engine?
That would be the purchase of the engine, the purchase of the equipment to outfit the engine, and the equipment costs for outfitting each firefighter.
Okay, and so, when you're talking about you have only three paid personnel?
Typically, so, the county already has a wild and urban coordinator, Dr. Chris Mote, and so he would have to take on some of the role of overseeing some of this. But typically, if you were to go to like Angel Fire or something like that, they have a group of guys that they hire that understand that the only time they come into work is when they're called out to a, to a fire. And so, it's not people that would just be sitting around the station waiting, that would be hires that are waiting for assignments to go be sent on. Typically, we would have three people that were identified as the ones that were going to be going out as the primary group, and then we would hire one or two alternates in case one of those members couldn't make an assignment, so that we could fill that engine whenever we saw it.
And that would imply there was a fire here locally and not on assignment, but we use in-house, they wouldn't be on 24/7, they would just be paid according to when they get called out for a fire here?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Just, Mr. Chairman, on the personnel note for everybody, I think it's important to keep in mind as we structure this, to look at how, what type of positions people could create within the organization to control these, whether they're temp positions or what type of personnel positions they are. So, we were looking at what some of our neighbors have done with it, so...
And I can answer that right now. These would be temp hires that would be considered seasonal, so they would typically work through, from April through October, November, depending on the fire season. So, there would be temporary hires.
It's a great idea. You guys are being proactive in the process, seeing what your vision is and mission is in the next four to five years. And I'm just coming asking to help fund your departments, the type of equipment that you're coming with, creative ideas of how to keep us from, I was asking to figure out how to help to support it, so if you get it, it's a fair job. Bringing up these programs that can bring revenue in.
Mr. Chairman, I just brought the idea of adding the second engine type for the more versatile, and it would be the same personnel, just responding with a different apparatus to different situations, and which would give them more of an opportunity to make them a reason Angel Fire to make them what Tous Fire used to be.
And James or Commissioner, I'm pregnant, or, it also, depending on the type of apparatus, also increases the reimbursement rate for those employees, so it would be higher rates on the Type 3 truck, and eventually, we would be willing to supply an ambulance to go up to the scene, that's a different rate for an ambulance or a driver, if you will.
We can add a tender, and that requires one person on the tender, oil and tender, and, you know, the rate for that is a lot less, but it's, it's something that's only staffed by one person. Hopefully, we'd be getting money in that traditional as a tender, too. So, we may, there's a whole gamut of things, maybe we'll do ambulance associated with our, we could do a mobile which can command associated with this. So, they've got a lot of others they can do, and eventually, it's going to just add to their rating, their credibility, and their ability to bring back in focus. And Corvus, Mike, Chief Corvus and I have worked together for a long time, and our visions have always lined up relatively the same, and that's one of the reasons that I came on board with the county, is because our views are very similar. And the view we have is we want to continue to move the county forward in its fire protection sector, while being responsible with the funding that we've been given through the taxpayers and anything like that. We want to be able to supplement that as best we can.
Very good.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Where we house this?
That is something we're still trying to get into, that we're in the planning stages of that right now, so we're not entirely sure. But that would be a fairly easily logistical issue to overcome, because it doesn't require a specialized station, it requires a stationary garage and some storage area, and a little office and stuff like that.
Thank you for your presentation, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next item is item 10. This is a public hearing. We're going to open the public hearing at 10:45. This is a public hearing for discussion, consideration, decision, ordinance 2019-2, establishing Tous County Fire Order Ordinance. This is incorporated into 2015 International Fire Code. We do have, Mr. Chairman, so Fire Marshal here present to you.
Thank you, Dan, Commissioner Farrow. Let me just start off by saying that I thank you all for your diligence and pushing this forward and working with me on this. For those of you that aren't aware, top of the room, essentially, the International Fire Code is a fire code that's established by the International Code Council, and this is what most agencies, state affiliates, use as their fire code. And essentially, what it is, is it gives us a very precise rules and regulations on how public safety is covered from the fire aspect of it. This particular ordinance is actually very similar to the states that adopted the 2015 version of the International Fire Code several weeks ago, with a couple of minor changes that sort of tailor this ordinance towards Tous County itself. So, just kind of giving a brief overview of what the fire code is. What that does is that would enact me to have the authority to go conduct fire inspections on businesses, also be a resource for the community, be able to come if they have safety concerns, safety issues, they can come and talk to me about those things.
This is a public hearing, if anybody can go. Speak. It's supposed to be going up to the sworn, Mr. Farrow.
We swear in firm under oath and penalty of walking per drink that the personnel we are about to give this change.
I do.
Do you say anything?
Edward DeHill, Tous County Planning Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I want to take the opportunity to thank our Chief Corvus and Fire Marshal Hampton for the efforts in putting this ordinance together. I also want to recognize both gentlemen for working with the planning department and according to the planning staff, the opportunity to chime in and give feedback on the proposed ordinance. The planning department and myself are in support of the passage of the ordinance 2019-2. I think that both our Chief Corvus and Fire Marshal Hampton for the opportunity to review the ordinance as previously stated. The ordinance, the planning department, for its land use regulations and subdivision regulations, requires certain type of development permits. Nearly all development permits require an advocate to prepare a fire prevention plan. The adoption of the fire code ordinance will assist planning staff, depending on the proposed development permit for the creation of a provincial fire plan of a fire prevention plan. Further, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, within the land use regulations, we have appendix number four with states. All commercial zoning clearance, administrative zoning clearance, specialty zoning permit and major ground permit zoning applications shall be reviewed by a Tous County official that is ICC certified, and that would be Mr. Hampton and again, Mr. Corvus, who are both working towards full certification. The term complies with the most recent version of the International Code Council, the International Fire Code, adopted by the state of New Mexico. So, we have been working under the guise of the adoption by the state of New Mexico. This is a benefit, because now we'll have our own fire code adopted by Tous County. By doing so, this allows, as I indicated, for not only planning staff, but also constituents and developers and people who desire to, to work within, within the confines of the land use regulations, to reach out to Mr. Hampton, to Mr. Corvus, in relation to type of fire prevention plan associated with their respective development. In closing, I'd just like to say that our ordinance concludes by saying, unless amended or adopted by ordinance by Tous County. So, having said that, we, our land use regulations already allow for the adoption of the fire permits or complement our land use code. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you.
Anyone else? Public hearing, which is speaking. We're done, I'm going to both public hearing at 10:08. Commissioners, this is a consideration discussion. Decision discussion, that is question, consideration decision, the ordinance 2019-2. Commissioners, would you like to...
Yes. Yes. Make a motion that we adopt ordinance under 2019-2, establish the Tous County Fire Code Ordinance incorporated in 2015 I S C Code. I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman. Motion is seconded and made.
Any discussion?
Yes, just a quick question. Is there anywhere in the code that if there's a fire on someone's property and it hasn't been cleaned up, do you have the authority to go in and cite them for not cleaning up their property after a fire?
That is a issue that has been brought up in the past, and the, the short answer to that is I do not have the authority to tell somebody what they can and cannot do on their private property. Now, when that changes, is if that particular problem becomes a hazard to public safety, then that gives me the authority to go in there and to, to do things about it. What we have seen in the past, typically, if there's a potential structural fire that maybe completely burned the structure, what we do require is that the owner of that place at least secure that facility with some sort of fencing or stuff like that to prevent the accidental somebody entering that, that premises in potential, but as far as the cleanup cost and, or the cleanup itself, that would be more of a solid waste code compliance issue. Thank you.
Senator, please go over.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Farrow?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman DeGuss?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for all the work you're doing and continue to push forward, and we'll see what we can do in the future for years to come.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, Commissioners, is item 7, the set agenda. These items are the set agenda, we know how big we do, and we're supporting a lot of these activities for the appreciate consideration decision. We have two. And today, we have follows DFA Resolution Number 30, 2018-19FY, adjusting the 2019 fiscal budget to counter amendment one of contract number 2018, 2019, 60852, by, by me through the Tous County and non-venturiary agency on the agent, increasing the federal order additional to $113,917,32. I read this resolution, number 31, 2018, 2019, fiscal year adjusting the 2019 budget. Item B is resolution number 31, 2018, 2019 fiscal year, adjusting the 2019 budget to increase general fund revenue and expenditures to account for payout of lease and zero ops machines. Item C is approval budget adjustment for county share fund 0101 dash 0500. Item E is approval budget adjustment for county grant fund 0509 dash 4501. Item F is approval budget adjustment for foster grandparent program fund 2019 dash 0117. Item G is approval budget adjustment for human resource fund 0101 dash 1010. Item H is approval of budget adjustment accounting complex fund 0101 dash 1150. Item I is approval of budget adjustment accounting complex fund 0101 dash 1150. Item I is approval of budget adjustment of the modified district fund 0222 dash 1550. Item J is approval of budget adjustment E911, central communications fund 0277 dash 0911. Item K is approval of amendment memorandum of understanding between by and between American Federation of State County District employees and council, 18, local 1193, Taus County regarding retention period for retention officers. Item L is approval of memorandum of understanding by and between American Federation of State County District Employee Council, 18, local 1193, regarding ship, vans, and vessel, all the employees. Item M, M is request for out-of-state travel for the ownership of senior, senior, and senior workers to attend lease sniper response of the entry training, normal on May 18, 2019, and 17, 2019. Commissioners, is there anything you'd like to move consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item M.
Our chair asks to remove item M. Anything else, Commissioners?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve items A through L of the consent agenda.
Correct. Okay, motion is seconded. Have we made any further discussions for those items? Ms. Van Volk, please call over.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Vegas?
Yes. Vice Chair O'Donnell, you have a floor for item M.
I did have a couple of questions. The training said as a prerequisite, you had to have another class and do these two individuals. Have they completed that? Maybe if you could just go down a little bit more.
Yes, thank you, General Counsel, Commissioners. This is part of the series. Two years ago, they took the basic portion of this training, if you will. Since then, to get this training, classes have been canceled. There's not current one in New Mexico. This one came up for out-of-state travel in Oklahoma. We had budgeted for out-of-state travel, the current budget that we're in, but the trainings just don't help available that often. This is the next part of that series. And it's dual, it'll be pressure and the next level is wrong. And it's something that our SRT benefits from and is well utilized.
All right, thank you.
So for the record, Chair, they have taken the prerequisite, the basic train. This is the next level training.
The one that they attended prior in Arizona needs to be vetted, to the best of my knowledge. Obviously, I'm not going to have the... Yes, I would take that. They were qualified to be accepted into this training group. And they only took like six of the time. Very intense, pretty high speed stuff.
Any other questions, Commissioners? Move for approval, Mr. Chairman? Second, motion is made, second has follows. Ms. Van Volk, please.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Vegas?
Yes. Thank you all. We have item 12, resolution of ordinances, approval of resolution 2019, 18, the resolution appointing members to the Taus County Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. Mr. McQuaid asked the chairman if I would read out the appointed resolution for the members of the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board. So we just follow through, Commissioners. Whereas the Taus County Board of Commissioners is the duty of authorizing a governing body out of Taus County, a New Mexico political subdivision. Whereas the Taus County Board of Commissioners pursuant to New Mexico State. I guess, if I may say, 1978, I'll point Lodger's Tax Advisory Board consisting of high residents of Taus County, two of whom are owners and operators of lodges subject to this tax. One of the two who are the operators of the business directly involved in the tourist-related industry and one of the member at large who shall represent the general public. And whereas the Lodger's Tax Advisory Board shall advise the Taus County Board of Commissioners on the expenditures of the occupancy tax fund. Advertising, publicizing, promoting tourist attractions and other expenditures is authorized by the state statute. Now therefore, we resolve by the governing body of all persons of the way appointed to serve Taus County. The appointee shall assume the duties effective, would be today, if the governing body wishes to put people listed 2019 and shop services passing for one year until a design or removed by the Taus County Board of Commissioners. Here's the catch of this. Appointees who are authorized and are to execute the incumbent duties of this appointed office according to the Constitution of the state of New Mexico. I got one, two, five Commissioners. Number one is John Paul Bradley, he's in the lodging industry. I have Alvaro Rico. Two is Lindsay May, she's in the lodging industry. We have Alvaro Camiento. I think she's like... Alina Amigo is a tourist-related town. DeBora Sandoval, tourist-related town. And Janet Vail, county resident, also town.
Commissioner Fabro?
I see I have first listed and the release lot, that's the town council's address, and she has a town council email. So that leads me to believe that she works for the town council.
Yes.
Item, hold on, please. Well, I think that they wanted to get some town council information. There differs over the summer and... It just, I'm basing that only on providing information. If you recall, recent meetings, we've had, I think from the town council, come criticize actions. And this public body and the community, and we feel this would be another way. And we were being criticized because of the way we spend our lodger's tax money by people higher up in the town council. So in fact, I've got one vote.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask, whose district is number three?
I don't know. Is there any districts? I don't think all these are in each district. They've done it in the past where they select five members for their ordinance.
Usually districts.
They try to. Fortunately, in my district, I haven't had a representation of all in the past three years. But what this board is supposed to do is make sure that they take on the decisions that what's going to be beneficial and how lodger's taxes can benefit.
I don't have a problem with that, Mr. Chairman. I'll go ahead and set up a motion for approval of this resolution. Mainly the five individuals subject to the lodger's tax.
Okay, there's a motion that's been made by Commissioner Romero. I'll second it. Second, by Commissioner Blakenhardt. Any special Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, and with that, it's resolution number 2019, 19.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I'm happy to give an amendment to this, that we appoint number one, two, four, and five, and do not appoint number three. And allow, I believe it is in Commissioner Fabro's district, that he work on finding a replacement for number three. So that is my motion.
That's part of your discussion?
No, it's my motion. I'm making an amendment. No, you can make an amendment to what's on the table.
She doesn't get a second, I'm just telling her. Okay. So Vice Chair O'Donnell has made an amendment to her motion to approve one, two, four, and five. Correct. Removing three to find another position, or find another person for that position. Do I hear a second? Here's no. As your motion dies, we still have further discussion. Commissioner? Mr. Chairman, what happened to Mr. Baker? Is he still on?
She's not even going to... She asked to present this, hoping I told you about it. And question for that, she can help answer.
Why, why Chris was on this? Yeah, that's what I was talking about. Alvino was an active, good member of this, but I guess he didn't apply. And these members have been vetted and considered by the county clerk. And these are the ones they've submitted to us. Ms. Amigo is knowledgeable and I think she would be a fine addition to the board. So that's Commissioner, I appreciate it very much. Just relating to comments from the town council. Well, I was one of the bigger commentators on how I thought we should use our lodger's tax funds. So I'm not going to hold that against the town. But you know, I hear you, Commissioner Fabro. Maybe then I'll support it. I'll support what has been recommended by the county.
Thank you. And just, you know, hopefully this can kind of continue to happen, the working environment between our county. Hopefully, this would be that Ms. Amigo will be able to relay some of that information that has been falsely assumed by those executive officials of how they spend their money. And maybe she might bring it and ask you to do it. We'll try this out. Hopefully it will be beneficial. If there's no other direction, I ask Ms. Van Volk.
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
No.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Vegas?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Item 13 is contracts agreements, MOUs and/or bids. We have two there selective. Item is acknowledging agreement to the state and municipal finance program division, community development block grant program for historic courthouse grant number one dash C dash NR dash one zero three dash G. Three, we have our manager, Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Commission. I stand up looking for you for your approval of the grant agreement included in your packet. As the mayor, as the Commissioner said, this is our grant agreement for $750,000 between the local government division of the state of New Mexico and Taus County for the use of old county courthouse for ADA improvements.
Move for approval, Mr. Chairman? Okay, a debate, and a second is item discussion, Commissioners. Do you know, Ms. Van Volk, please call over?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Vegas?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners. Item V is a discussion, consideration, decision regarding the approval of contract TCC 219 dash one. A1 Tradec Enterprises, we have Mr. Phil, please ask him some questions.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioner. Before you amend the contract TCC 2019 dash one, today we are asking approval for the increase of the amount of an additional $10,588.08. Please remember that this contract is a two-year contract. So it would be increasing it by an additional $5,294.04. This is to... There was an error when originally when this was put out to be as a new contract for January. And Tradec actually found a calculation error that they did not include the cost for the maintenance of the actual J-Walk program, which is lying by a portion in those modules. So this is increasing it to credit the contract to the current amount, which would increase it up to $75,868.08, which is for the two-year span. So it's about thirty, about $32,000 to $36,000 a year.
Do you recommend approval?
I do recommend approval.
Mr. Chairman, I wish to approve contract TCC 219 dash one, A1 Tradec Enterprises.
Well, she's been paid right here, second. I'll second with your questions, Mr. Chairman. Second with this question. Are other counties still using Tradec? How many are there in the state of New Mexico that are?
I'm not aware right now off the top of my head, but I do know there's other entities out there that are counties that are still using Tradec.
And where do we find Tradec at this time?
I would have to ask them. To better know which counties are, should be realizing their services at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion, Ms. Beatty? Do you know, Ms. Van Volk, please call over?
Commissioner Romero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenhardt?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell?
Yes.
Chairman Vegas?
Yes. Don't leave else, I was just very nervous. All right. Item 14, Commissioners, item 14, budget matters. Review of the agency request for 2020 fiscal interim budget. Your manager, Mr. Adam Neil?
Thank you, Chairman, Members of the Commission. I come before you today to discuss the agency's request. And over the past year, we've done this at the back end of the budget process. Generally, these items listed come out of the 399 Fund, as we call it. And so I wanted to present that these are the requests that have been submitted to the county that we've generally funded in the past. And as Ms. Martinez works on budget preparation, we wanted to see if this body still wanted to go forward with funding these requests, which have been for the New Mexico State Quoam Extension Program, the New Mexico State Library, this is for the rural book and meal, bills requested appliance service of $120,000. U N M adult literacy. The request is for thirty. Last year, we funded them twice, one for a $10,000 increment and the second $10,000 increment. We haven't been built for either or for either increment. And Taus Soil Water Conservation, $20,000. This is the program that ties back into Rocky Mountain Youth Corps and they're putting kids out and helping restore a set of good work. So since we couldn't fund Rocky Mountain Youth Corps directly, that's going to go through Taus Soil Water Conservation. We did fund this last year as well. And then Taus Land Trust is also requested $20,000. And that's to work on a different wildlife interface project. There's two of them. One is up in Carson and on the San Pablo area as well. And what we would like to recommend is that adult literacy, Taus Soil Water Conservation and Taus Land Trust, each get $20,000. And so we can build that into the budget. Is there any questions, Commissioners?
Commissioner?
The $10,000 referred to, is that your conversation with the nature conservancy and their request for $10,000 for foresting projects?
Yes, it's tied also with the conservancy. So it's requested $20,000. So they have a similar work that they're doing in the Mosquin out of Berne Leo County. And they want to take that model and come in, work here at the county. So some of you have already individually heard their presentations in the past.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
Please, Mr. Chairman. Thanks, Chairman. So adult literacy, we funded $20,000 for this past year.
So adult literacy, we funded $20,000 for this past year, up to July first.
Yes, till June 30th.
Till June 30th.
So the initial budget had $10,000, and then UNM dollars came back, the commission granted them another $10,000. So we did an amendment to their fiscal services agreement, an additional $10,000.
So we anticipate funding them for the full thirty in 2020 this week.
Well, as I was, I emailed each of the recipients, we had already met with Taos Land Trust, and with, we had met with Taos Soil and Water regarding the SECA project. And so I emailed adult literacy program to see if they're going to again request funding from us, because I already had in mind asking the commission about this presentation. And so in her email back to me, she requested the $30,000.
Right, and so that's the interim budget amount that we're putting in for next year.
Well, we showed you the budget request, so we wanted from a staff, we want to know from the commission if you want us to proceed with $30,000, for example, where those three agencies each give them $20,000. That way, Ms. Martinez can work on the budget. And that's kind of why we're starting this early. She's already been working on the budget. Basically, this conversation's at the back end, and we're saying, oh, there's no money for this. And you remember that conversation last year? And I think that's where we had came up with the $10,000. So I was taking a different approach this year, that way developing the 399. Because after this is set, it then goes over to what we're going to then budget out for road projects in which are the commission districts, so.
But you're going to want us to make a decision on?
Yeah, it's not listed as an action item, but kind of we want your input before we proceed, because you could tell us, no way, we're not going to fund Taos Soil and Water Conservation. And I want you to hear that from me now versus down the road. I know you didn't fund it, but.
That's good. I appreciate the approach. So next year, we can have the discussion, and at least it won't be reduced to, well, it's not in the budget. We can actually have the discussion on the merits, but appreciate it.
And we debated, we should have all come in and present, but we thought we would make the presentation. Down the road, we'd be on great Taos Land Trust, and to talk about their projects.
Mr. Chairman, what does that project consist of with the Taos Land Trust?
It's forest planning, et cetera, still on in the Carson area as well, so it's a continuation of a project that's already taking place in Carson, not in the Carson, in the updated by ASME campus.
Or where?
Or where in that area. Apologize for my speaking, but so there, et cetera, still on.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I understand you correctly, you are suggesting for adult literacy that it be reduced to $20,000. In my understanding, that is your recommendation?
That's my recommendation. Although it's your decision.
And am I to understand correctly that they haven't billed us for this current fiscal year? So what's the problem with that?
Trying to be, we kind of have to remind them each year to bill us, because I know two years ago, they were still late, and it went into the next fiscal year. And so I don't know what the true need is. I'm assuming it's the $20,000, but there hasn't been the pressing request for the funding in some of these agencies. We have to remind them that money's here.
So if they don't access the current amount, does that mean they can't access next fiscal year's account?
No, the agreement is for the fiscal year.
So, Mr. Chairman, that just required you, so if they did not submit an invoice for the last $20,000, it stays within our budgets, do you?
It stays within the budget, and then that becomes part of the beginning balance for next year's budget.
I see, okay. Is there a deadline, Mr. Chairman, until when they have?
Till the end of June.
Till what?
Till the end of June. So we'd prefer mid-June, so that way it would get paid off in the current fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. I guess, I'll just, Commissioner Black, for myself, about that conversation, but they don't follow through billing us for this fiscal year. We just save that money, roll it to next year, twenty, and not have to pump another twenty in on the committed next fiscal year, correct?
Correct.
But they have a couple of months to go. I mean, I'm going to tell you the seventy invoice tomorrow. I bet you were already sending an email.
Cool. Thank you for that. If you, Mr. Adamio, I think it's beneficial that if those who increase, if they ask for an increase, that they would come to that presentation. I think other than that, it's going to be a reduction, or they can come to Taos Water Building, and they may be, they may ask for that increase, it would be beneficial for us to agree with that presentation. So that's all that I would ask in the future. Thank you for that. You can stay in there as we're going into moving on item fifteen, county managers' reports on matters. We do have four. Go ahead, Mr. Adamio.
Put it in your packet is a presentation of investigative report on distress remediation. I'm not going to spend too much time on that. A few months ago, we had our engineers coming to present on the distress of the building, mainly the stairwell located by the district court and district attorney's office, the floor in the county assessor's office, HR department, and the clerk's office. So put it in your packet, it's a copy of your report, your one, a hard copy, we can get you once, you can hold in your hands. So the next phase is cost estimating out of the different projects. So we want to break it up into phases. So the stairwell would probably be phase one, so I'm going to get a cost estimate of what about? I'm going to get a cost estimate for the assessor's office, is our number two priority or to be considered, one A and one B. The stairwell is a little bit of pressing issue, so the fire suppression is in that stairwell, so pipes burst. It's going to be more costly down the road to fix that. And then we have a lot of work to do in the assessor's office. I haven't met with any of the affected departments right now, but I did want to put this into your hands, and also to have it on for the record. And our next component of engineers are working on giving us cost estimates, so we can build that into the budget as well. Is there any questions on that?
Commissioner? Here you go.
So item B scheduled works study for April 2019. Ms. Martinez, I was offered by direction from the commission, and when they're available for work study items regarding the budgets and the comp. And this will also help Ms. Aron maybe develop the calendar for the month of April and May that you guys are also asking for. How many work studies do you expect, Commissioner?
Just about three presentations that we'd like to have for the commissioners, one, of course, the budget, one, a presentation on the old county departments, the global plan, and then, of course, the law plan. So we'll be getting some of your time to look for some suggestions.
And what date are you throwing out in April, you say?
We're asking you for the day that you're available.
This is May, correct?
April, we didn't want to bring it along.
Commissioners, look at your calendars real quick. Let's make sure. Is next Tuesday available for everybody? Is that something that you guys have ever managed, Adamio? Do you have a bit of next Tuesday?
I'd rather not have.
No, I've already got, our Tuesdays already, I have trial, I'm wanting to have a hearing that afternoon regarding county matter.
For me, 24th, 25th works, 29th, 30th works.
You can send out a poll, which days work better.
I'll make myself available whenever the jury is commissioned.
Me too.
Likewise. Okay, so we got Commissioner Fabro, Commissioner Vice Chair Donald, they need to make up the dates, so that we can.
Yeah, all right. And then the 30th or?
30th is Tuesday, 29th, we don't, 26th is a no. So pick between 29th and 30th, Commissioners.
What time you are doing the 23rd?
First thing in the morning. That's something anybody can consider to do.
About ten.
Ten o'clock. What do you think this work study could be up to, two hours? Commissioner, you mean, Mr. Adamio?
Yeah, two to three hours.
Because then we ought to be at two o'clock, so that's being.
Okay.
This is very early.
Twenty-third to September.
You want to start at ten? You get a clock.
What happened to the 25th?
I can't, I can't on the 25th.
And the 26th, what about a Friday?
I'm good with the 26th, Mr. Black, Mr. Chairman. 26th, can I possibly work for you, Mr. Commissioner Fabro?
I have nothing right now.
April 26th, 9:00 a.m. 9:00 a.m., April 26th, we have a work study session presented by our finance and director. Commissioners, thank you for working with the judge's times. Don't worry about the chairman's time, manage.
We'd be appreciative of the chairman's time.
All right, all right. Yes, sir. Mr. Fabio, we continue to move forward.
Okay, now to item C, in the month of June, our commission meetings are slated for the 4th and the 18th. The week of June 17th is the Wincs Federal Association of Counties Conference down in Kirby County. I believe nobody's signed up as of Thursday of last week from the commission level. I saw for Ms. Martinez, they're not going. I didn't have the opportunity to talk to her clerk if she was going to be available. So either I'm suggesting is we keep the 4th, if nobody's going, let's keep the 18th. And if clerk is not available, and the Semble's not available, then I may be suggesting moving into the 17th, which is a Monday, the 18th could be a travel date if anybody is going down to Clovis. And then I'm not available the week of the 24th or following week, that's why I would like to keep the commission meeting either on the 18th, or if anything, moving to the
Commissioner Fabro, I have to be at conference for two different positions. More confident with multi-line, so I would be attending, so that Monday works for me.
Monday, the June 17th, correct?
Because I'll be traveling on the 18th.
Let's make the 17th, so that we can make that be for commission meeting for later. Second commission meeting, correct? All right. Commissioner move on, I mean, Commissioner Council, I mean, you're my manager.
So I'll be brief on this as well. I've appointed Amanda Riel's interim human resources director now that Ms. Valdez left employment, left that void. I thought about doing it all by myself, working with the current staff, but realized couldn't do that, so appointed out Ms. Riel to serve as interim director until a new human resources director is hired. I'll also be holding end of the youth HR director this Thursday as well, so. The center construction should be completed by mid-July, by the carryover. It'll be done at time for the county fair. The senior center, we did talk about that earlier. So right now, construction is completed, I'm just working on a few punch list items, which is paint on some corners that got damaged, and so we should also be expecting a certificate of occupancy next week. We need to also coordinate moving over the boating machines with the county clerk into the building next door, so free up some more space at the old armory. So that's what we reported, the senior center, you mentioned earlier, we would wait for the grand opening until everything's completed. So speaking of the move to old armory, getting to here, all the items, except for some oil drums that are full of oil, have been removed. Environmental clean's coming tomorrow to drain out those old oil tanks, and after which the public works will remove. The owners of the town test has already given the property over to the developer, the developer's project manager will be here this week to pick up the keys from us for the building, and so we have, except for those oil drums, everything's been removed. And today at two o'clock, we also have a closing, as you may recall, purchased living wood ministries north of Costa to be used as a community center, so we have the closing at two o'clock today. Mr. Rudy Perea has accepted the offer of chief planner, so he will be replacing Mr. The only other things that need to kind of report on too is we, you might have heard about this two years ago, there was a Royal Honda school wants to be transferred over from Taos municipal schools over to the county to be used as a community center. So this is one of those legacy things that I'm being asked to deal with now. Another legacy thing is Badito Community Center, Penasco School District going to the building, there's some issues or not with the people running the community center right now. And so we're in the process of addressing those issues with the school district, another legacy thing. And then there's also Tyler Red River would like a decision on the grocery seed tax, 3911. So Ms. Martinez, myself, I had a woman there, meeting with their town administration, town administrator, Dr. Dana Riel, and kind of discussed some issues that have happened in the past, and think we want to move forward, but I've also said it's not this body's decision, but it's also, it's the 911 board's decision to move forward at the tax. So we're going to continue meeting with. So we're going to continue meeting with Tyler Red River on that. And probably the next phase is we'll involve some more players into that conversation. There's a Mr. Rodriguez from the Pinasco area as well. He's also complaining that there's mold in his house due to the county's building. But geographically, he lives west of the building, so we don't think if there's mold under this house is not caused. The building is thinking that the wetlands have changed since we put the building up. But I've talked to a few people in the water business and they think that that is, that is, could be the cause of that mold.
Well, most of that area is asphalt.
Yeah, it is. It's very sturdy and yeah. So I need to meet with him as well, so. And Mr. Elu Romero is asking the county to take his neighbors to court and to force them to clean up the property. So I need to visit with Mr. Strathew on that in case you hear about that from Mr. Romero. So it is one of those things. I don't think he'll hear about it. He knows that I'm working on it, but in case he approaches you, he knows that we're working on it. Ms. Martinez, myself, I just had a meeting with Mr. Mithina regarding the detox facility. He's still trying to work with the town house and leasing the building within the town limits. But it's from for use of the detox, so it's the old magistrate court building that he's looking to lease. We did meet with him, so he's anticipating getting zoning approval from the town on June 3rd. So if he gets the zoning approval, then we can sit down with Mr. Mithina and work on a contract for him. Those are all the items I have. It's time for any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say that I appreciate the lead from the board. When he met with the town, he doesn't want to move on. If she has an objection with the counties, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Your honor. Mr. Chair.
If it's possible, maybe a report next month on several items. The Copper Hill Free Road Yard status. Update on our flea market here at the parking lot. The status of the TID agreement. And in light of the art of public places for the senior center, I think we need to start working on an RFP for that art. And I see Mr. Figueroa is here, but the parameters for that RFP. You know, I think a sculpture is what we need there in the front. Whatever would work in the front would have to be some type of a sculpture. But I would like to move on that. So by September, October, at least, you know, it's gone out to bid and people have applied, artists have applied to create something for senior center.
I didn't run forward, it was my plan too, to respond to Mr. Figueroa's. It's kind of common to respond to the poll comments. So send him an email discussing that. Same thing with Mr. Philicky. Or if I get a chance after the meeting, I'll talk to him about what he brought above the comments as well.
Mr. Chairman, any word of the tower, communications tower of the old?
Don't defer that to Commissioner.
Well, my microphone died, so I'll make myself early if I can. If you'll recall, they are represented by an attorney by the name of Nancy Long. She promised me some response and has failed to do so. I sent her a letter last week basically saying, look, I've been patient. We've been patient. Get back to me or I'm going to be forced. That's not time for the story to go forward with a lawsuit. So that's where we're at. If I don't hear anything, I will come to you in a close session of that discussion. Did I remember thinking this? Commissioner, I was having a meeting. I'm not sure if I can bring this up here. I don't think it's going to come before us, but the proposed asphalt, what is it? Mine plant that Mr. Perovich is proposing for the area, that area that he owns west of the George Bridge. Mr. Manager, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that is something that we should pull off. It may eventually come to you. Planning is in the process with me of evaluating what's there now, what's the status? Was there ever any approvals by the county? Is it something that's so old, it's grandfathered, all those things? So it may in fact be coming to you. Thank you very much. Anything else there, Commissioner?
One more item. That thing that, as you saw, we did some renovations in here. It's suggested by Ms. Aranidi for the commission. Is that we bring everybody in through those double doors? And maybe just leave this door open for staff, but the public interested there. And I can see, and we still need to staff another table here for the deputy manager or anybody else presented from staff. Sorry to think it would kind of restrict the flow from the public. So we'll play with that. So just, if there's any customer service issues that you see related to us not allowing the general public to have those double doors for commission meetings, please let me know. So we're going to be kind of playing with the room a little bit. But I know it's, Nisa suggested that maybe we do that. Seeing the meeting today, you'll see where she's coming from. It would be easier to do that.
Can you get a Nisa high chair?
She's further than I know.
Is that why you're crying? Anything else, Mr. Fabio? Okay, Commissioners, I meant to ask Mr. Fabio, who I have to speak. Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I blanked out on this one. It's okay. Just wondering if any of the Commissioners are seeing any flooding issues? Or complaints coming in from people that live here, river areas? I've got one already in Taca, a woman by the name of Nora Anthony. So I was just kind of wondering if, how do we go about making sure that no flooding occurs?
Funny thing, I'm looking at Nisa because I guess he did ask Mr. Luceno to make a presentation as we're getting ready for the, today, he had asked if he could postpone it to May 7th. There is going to be sand pre-staged at our fire departments. A lot of the sandbags we are borrowing, the sandbag filling machine, water counties. I'm not sure if it's here yet or when it's coming up, but Mr. Luceno is going to borrow that. We should probably see how they made theirs and do it ourselves too. So I've seen some folks do some handmade ones that are pretty crafty. So we will have sand and bags staged in different areas of the county. And we do want to put out a notice in the paper that if there's flooding, they can go to the local fire departments for it. And.
What is Mr. Luceno's phone number?
Mr. Chairman, a filling machine should be shoveling sand in the sandbags.
Our maintenance authority can look at some equipment. They may have all the old boxes that were for salted cinders. They can maybe.
It's 779-8381.
Thank you very much.
And Mr. Chairman, there was a report that Taos County has 118% median. Depending on the weather, maybe we'll get lucky and we won't see the river really overflowing. But if the weather gets really hot and it all comes down at once, then we could have a problem.
Okay. Nothing else for you, Commissioner, for the reports of matters? Most, sure.
Commissioner Fabro, the Blue Bus NCR TV has resurrected their monthly newsletter. I've given each one and I have actually talked to the public. So we'll just keep reporting you information. Lot of stuff regarding the county wide repeater system that they will be working with our people to assure that they've got the locations throughout Taos County. Plus, we're going to have Colfax County, unfortunately, is now asked to be a part of the NCR TV. So it's growing. It will be a possible loop around the entire channel in a year's time. So.
Thank you. Commissioner, you know what's up with Commissioner announcements?
Just a certain day, click on it, it's Monday. We all know about that.
You have one yet. You have one yet.
Okay, so we have a bid. And we picked roadways. In the district, correct?
Yeah. What's the biggest reason for the collection of stuff?
Miniatures.
What's one of your favorite?
It's a miniature.
Come on, you're killing me.
Is there something that is connected with maybe?
Miniatures, plastic bottles.
Plastic bottles, that's.
Plastic bags.
Thank you, my chair. Thank you for that announcement. That's great.
I lost.
No other than us, Commissioner?
Yes.
So this Rio Van Morten heritage group, I got an invitation from, have you been on that?
I've been on that board.
Are you on it now?
No, you can have it.
Okay. Well, I got an invitation from the Santa Fe Commissioner to join up. And I have, I'm not really on many boards as many as the rest of you, so. I figured I'd do it if it was okay with you all. It's just lobbying for federal funds, request to get some money for that back in trade. So I'll do it. It's quarterly meetings if nobody objects. I need a letter from Brandon to get me on.
I'll do your alternate.
And, and, and thank you, Kansas.
Was my standing above anything else?
Commissioner, though?
You want your money back.
Yeah, I know. But I also was going to bring something else up. It's not normal, maybe, for Commissioners' announcements, but I'm going to do it anyway. So hope you'll bear with me a little bit. So we haven't done the memorandum of agreement with the state to sign all of our detainees out of Medicaid. And we can't, of course, guys, unless we do that. I think we're maybe the last county that has. It's not, it's not something that is being held up at county's desk. I think it's operational difficulties at the detention center. There are more serious potential operational deficiencies at our detention center than that. That's just one example. And, you know, I really appreciate those three guys that are doing their best there. I'm really grateful that they're all employed by Taos County. I know that there's a consideration to do, get a consultant in there. And that may be a good idea, but for right now, there's some obvious changes that could be made. The sheriff is willing, able, and has resources to go into the detention center and make some changes that would benefit security and improve operations. There's some, I believe, ball handling fruit and an ability to back me down the hatches. To use a couple of metaphors, that we would not need consultation to get to. And as Commissioner Fabro will tell you, if there's smoke, you don't look for consultation. The first thing you do is act. And I'm hoping that we do that. And I don't know, obviously, there's negotiations that would involve me. It would be between the sheriff and the manager. But I hope that they will sit down and try and come to some agreement so that we can make some immediate changes that I think would be clear and that the sheriff would be more than able to do. And once we do those things, then of course consultation would be good. Maybe we can find out some more refinements. But right now, we need action. And I think that it's clear the kinds of action we need, that we wouldn't need consultation to come to it. You know, I think that we could come to those changes on our own. And, you know, I don't really understand the reluctance to utilize the sheriff's resources and abilities in this very serious manner. So that's it. I have the metaphors I use. Of course, I have, except maybe fiddling while rope is burning.
Yes, I'm sure if we don't do something, I will be moving very, sort of, close to the facility.
Appreciate the announcements that you will put out, assuming that we have that forum to be considered a future commission meeting. If there's something that can be resolved between then, between now and then, then maybe that's a conversation that our manager can have with the sheriff. But I think that at this point, it does have immediate commission meeting. Definitely, we should probably have something prepared, at least presented to the commission as a whole. I would always get a good idea of what potentially can be the benefit of using the sheriff's department in there. But I think that's what things I would have in future commission meeting. If it resolves sooner than that, we have a couple of things to present. Processes. Any other commission comments? Announcements still? Just one announcement.
Well, it is announcements. So when we get that body scanner, we have no place to put it. So you might have to include a remodeling of the detention center for next year's budget. Because there's no place to put the body scanner. So that's going to be an issue. I just wanted to bring that up.
Thank you for that announcement. I do ask in a lighter note to Commissioners that we give Mr. Fabio, our county manager, the opportunity to see fit to give his staff Friday off for each day. I think that staff is well-deserving a day off. We take it off the books for other reasons, but I think it would be something that we could do. Appreciation to the staff to give in the way.
Is that so, they can all go watch the golf team in Raton on Friday?
Sure. Books, tag, expressions. That's all that I ask that the Commission would, if we could have Mr.
I, that we could have Friday off. I formally make an oath to that.
I think, Mr. Chairman, we have the opportunity to move forward if you wish to. And perhaps blessings to the Commission. We do have a couple of things. We are moving on to the new business to be considered a future commission meeting. I don't know if we've been careful, Commissioner, what we expect to be either presented, discussed, or actually made for our next meeting. If you have any questions for us to clarify, what we'd like to see on the next agenda. Do we want to, I ask that the Commission would consider, will we reach out to the town house if we feel it makes sense to have a joint meeting on some of these issues that we have that are either going to be ordinance issues or just to empower.
we have that are either going to be ordinance issues, or just doing our [inaudible] issues at the meeting?
Yeah, the housing, do we know what's going on with the housing on Erdner Street, it's supposed to break down in the spring?
No, we don't, as far as where, we're not partners to that. We did turn over the land, it's been, it was my understanding that they have since turned it over to the developer, and that's the only thing that I've heard.
Probably nice to get some input, some updates, since we did give them a [inaudible], after all, right? And since it's a big issue, not just that, but we really are needing it.
And, Mr. Artio, you can have in the next meeting for the commission, attention base, if you could reach out to Mr. Bell, so [inaudible] participate in this. My suggestion, Commissioner, is to all of you, if it could be after July, both the town of Taos and Taos County, or in our budget process, we all, for the county, we also have union negotiations, and we even haven't set up the calendar yet on when to meet, so our plates are pretty full, plus all the legacy things that are talking up to the dress. Commissioner?
Yeah, that's fine, just if you can get some update on housing before then, on how that project [inaudible].
And, Mr. Chairman, if we could have some sort of update and timelines with regards to the old courthouse, now that we've got the CPG as well as the [inaudible].
Right, that's part of the work study is for...
All right then, if there's no other new business to be considered for the future commission meeting, according to staff, we've got three full things that they got to take care of, working the budget process in time, so. Next item is the annual conference attending for the 19th, 21st. I would say that I feel comfortable that I'd be able to go, Mr. Artio, yes, you got to stop, if you register, so. Anyone else aboard?
Mr. Chairman, I'm on jury duty, so I, my schedule's kind of up in the air for that time, it doesn't end till end June, so I don't know. I have to let you know the week before.
Did Mary anything else to get [inaudible]?
Awesome, awesome. Okay, but there's nothing else? There's nothing else? Commissioners, item 17, we should make the meeting in closed sessions. If we discuss the closed session, that item is, the discussion regarding AFSC and [inaudible] Taos County Department of Public Boil酒, 793 and 2097. This matter may be discussed in pursuit of [inaudible] exemption 1015-185, allows us to discuss [inaudible] to collect [inaudible] motions in this [inaudible]. Item B, the discussion of any litigation regarding Jonathan [inaudible] Taos County, D-20-CV 2017-00390, this matter will be discussed during the session, [inaudible] Act 1015-187, which allows discussion for [inaudible]. Item C, discussion regarding litigation, D-820-CV-2018-00293, [inaudible]. Your Board versus Taos County Commissioners, this matter will be discussed during the session, [inaudible] Act exemption 1015-187, discussion [inaudible]. Item D is discussion regarding hospital acquisition of water rights, this may be disclosed, may be discussed in closed session, [inaudible] Act 1015-185, which allows discussion of purchase and acquisition, [inaudible]. Commissioners, I've read that items are being discussed in closed session, motion to adjourn closed session, [inaudible]. Motion second have been made, [inaudible].
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell? Yes. Chairman Gago?
Yes, 11:55, we can get it closed session at 12:05, [inaudible]. All positive, you need to, Commissioners, what do you mean upstairs?
There's not a handle there.
Motion to come out of executive session at 12:50, motion to come out of the closed session to, or closed session, sorry, item second, motion second have been made, [inaudible].
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell? Yes. Chairman Gago?
Yes. Mr. Artio, would you please can report this closed, discussing executive session, bringing in closed session? Board went into closed session on the items listed on the agenda, no other matters were discussed, and no action was taken. Motion to legal council to report, [inaudible].
Second.
Motion second have been made, [inaudible].
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenworth?
Yes.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell? Yes. Chairman Gago?
Yes. Okay, next item is item 17, item 17 is a big order the county commission gives the county manager to [inaudible] that are of interest, which is water rights. This matter was discussed, mainly discussed in executive session, [inaudible] Act exemption 1015-185, which allows discussion of the purchase and acquisition of water rights. Commissioners, which way would you?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to set a motion that the Taos County Board of Commission give the county manager the authority to submit a matter of interest for the purchase of water rights. That motion and second have been made, discussion?
Discussion. Yes. Should we allow our attorney to research first whether or not such a large purchase would be a, allowed the use of public funds?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, I'll amend my motion to include the comments made by Commissioner Blakenworth.
So, it would be contingent upon a advisement from Mr. Artio regarding that, that the letter, because the letter of intent says we intend to make this purchase, but we really don't want to make that intention unless it's appropriate.
Correct, I'll amend my motion to make sure that it addresses a specific concern that [inaudible]. So, to get the motion correct, Commissioner Omero, there's a motion to allow the county manager the authority to submit a matter of interest to the purchase of water rights, contingent on the review and recommendation by legal counsel, see fit that it is, it could possibly be a legal purchase.
Yes, thank you. Do you second that?
I do, I second that, and again, second. Again, second is [inaudible]. No further discussion? [inaudible].
Commissioner Omero?
Yes.
Commissioner Blakenworth?
No.
Commissioner Fabro?
Yes.
Vice Chair O'Donnell? Yes. Chairman Gago?
Yes. Motion to make, second. Thank you, thank you all for showing up today, appreciate it, good job, keep up the good work from [inaudible]. Stay focused, [inaudible].